Notice of public hearing. Please take notice of the public hearing will be held at 2:00 PM on the 14th day of March, 2019, in the legislative chambers, 44 county office building, 46 East Bridge Street, New York, at which time all persons desiring to express their view may be heard in the matter of the consideration of requests for landowner inclusion within the existing certified agricultural district pursuant to New York State Ag and Markets Law, Section 303B, as amended. In accordance with Ag and Markets Law, the following applications were received during the established annual window of January 1st through January 1st, and reviewed and recommended for inclusion by the Farm and Land Protection Board. One, Jeffrey Goodsell, town of Richland, 21.71 acres. Two, Robert and Sandra Hudson, town of Scriba, 76.92 acres. Three, Bernard Rafferty, town of Sandy Creek, 116.8 acres. Four, David and Tammy Russell, Parish, 44.86 acres. By order of the Assoio County Legislature, February 14, 2019, Christopher Jones, clerk. Any person wishing to be heard regarding the amendments to the existing agricultural district, please step forward and state your name. Mr. Chairman, there being no persons wishing to be heard, I would request you to declare the public hearing closed at 2:00 or 3:00 PM. Thank you.
We're going to have a slight delay to the start of our original meeting. We have an opportunity to hear from our Congressman. So when it gets to that point, Chris Jones, take over.
Before the legislative session begins, Congressman John Cacko, representing New York's 24th District, would like to address the county legislature. Congressman Cacko, do you have any ears?
I'm coming. Nice to meet you, okay? How are you folks doing today?
Doing good.
I apologize to the voice, it's been an extraordinary long week, and I've just got myself run on a rag here. Why don't I touch base with you on a few things I'd like to, you could give me a few minutes? Why don't you wire this forward if I can, if you find it helpful, just let us know. We've done a lot of work this last couple of weeks with the International Joint Commission, which regulates water levels in Lake Ontario. There's a lot of concerns, and we've been engaged on this issue with all of you for years now. Representative Redici and I, joined with other business, to contact the National Joint Commission, the leaders, ask to take immediate mitigation for the flood risk. They're letting out water to the east of Lake Ontario, but not as much as they can be. The problem with the National Joint Commission is it doesn't have three U.S. representatives that are still pending in the Senate to get approved. And until they get there, they don't have a quorum, and if they don't have a quorum, they're not going to be able to do much. So we're trying to get those three individuals on the IJC approved and up and running. And Redici and I have contacted Shul about that, and others. And Shul and Kilbren and I have contacted leaders in the House Water and the Senate Water as well. Concerned about next year, and just a heads up, maybe you may know, the water levels in the other Great Lakes are quite high. And as you may or may not know, it takes a while for you to get to Lake Ontario, but it is coming. So I suspect that these high water levels are going to be here for a while to stay. So I am concerned about that, and we're still working on that. So if there's anything you have to provide to us on that, please let us know. Very excited about what's going on with the tourism component of Oswego County. We were excited about what happened with the nuclear industry a few years ago, but the next great thing is really the tourism. And first thing was getting the Florida on the right path towards making it a national park. And legislation did recently, it's very going to help that. So I think they're doing a study now, next year or two, we hopefully can get this thing wrapped up and get it finalized, and make it a fort. Excited about that. We also realize that there's more treachery needs to be done in Port of Oswego. And I spoke to one of the Army Corps Engineers last week, and that's going to be taking place soon, some of the treachery that you guys requested. Another exciting development that's not a deathly gap, but is promising, is making waters off of Lake Ontario Marine Sanctuary with the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. They will bring a lot of support, a lot of notoriety, a lot of tourism, and some federal dollars, and it's not going to disrupt the fishing industry at all. In fact, it's going to enhance it, I think, because more people are coming up to visit for the Marine Sanctuary, and they're going to take more trips out fishing as well. And yes, you know, there's a lot of shipwrecks that are out in that water zone that are very well preserved, and nobody's going to be able to basically promote that. They did something similar in Lake Michigan, and it's been a huge success. The local college chair is opening more courses, and a lot more kids are going to the school to study marine-type courses, and it's been doing very well there, so we're excited about that as well. I just want to come let you know, we're working, I got a terrible cold, we're working very closely, and I've represented Redici on a number of matters, and it's because I'm really committed to the bipartisan, and I was pointing out last night, I got a prestigious award for my partnership, and to here in Congress, and I continue to work across the aisle to get things done. And Oswego, I think has been a great success for us legislatively. There's a lot more we've got to do, but I think Oswego's giving a lot more attention than you stay at, and that's a really good thing. I work for, I look forward to working with all of you. I continue to come up there, and I continue to meet with all of you. If you ever wanted to meet with different constituents or different issues, just please let me know. I deserve to work with you and all to basically be a partner with you. But then, hopefully, if anybody has any questions or concerns about anything, you can let me know. Abby, listen, I just want to take a few minutes of your time. You got anything there, guys?
Yes, I know. John, Richard Klein, you remember me from the Thomas School, I'm sure. I met with Eric yesterday, my supervisor and I did, from Lafayette, and one of the things he brought up was the fact that there's the amount of grant funding right now, and what I'm, my question is, is there, can we get an increase a little bit on grant funding for our sewer systems and sewer treatment plants? Because a lot of those areas up that you were talking about, up in Lake, in the Sandy Pond area, those sewer, the old drain fields that were shot, they got completely filled and infiltrated with water, and it ruins them. And we need some help there, and we can't take all the responsibility, I understand that, but get some funding so we can get some sewer treatment plants built along there and some districts formed.
Yeah, there's, we've clustered a lot of the grant funding programs, and I was at a small one, getting them clustered for this type of work. And it's at the state level now, what we do is we apply the money to states, when the states get the money down to you all. Another way to try and do it is look for specific grant opportunities that, in my office, Tom had it from my office in Syracuse. Well, if you contact him with specific what you need to have done, he can search the Congressional Research Service and all the databases, find out where the pots of money are, and they'll help you apply for the grants, and then, of course, we put letters of support on the grants for you. You know, in addition to that, there's something hopeful on the horizon, and you never say for sure here in Washington, trust me, but something hopeful is, infrastructure sounds like there's a big infrastructure package coming. If something does come, it's highly likely it's going to include things like this, because we're mindful, all over the country, here's the same thing you just said, about water and sewer systems. In Syracuse City right now, I don't know if you saw a paper recently, the sewer chicken plant's getting overwhelmed, because there's so many bad pipes, there's so much leakage, so much water getting into the sewer system, that it's overwhelming everything, because the pipes are so bad, and then, unforeseen discharges are now on the lake, which is what we're trying to clean up. So it's a big problem in our county, it's a big problem for you all in town, and my office will look for any grant opportunities we can find for you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Mel Chesbro?
Yes, Congressman, Mel Chesbro here. You started out with something that we consider very critical up here in Oswego, and that is the outflow that is going to be doing us some major flood damage. I'm wondering, do you have any kind of ETA as to when you're going to have a quorum, so something can be done, because this is really critical.
It's absolutely ridiculous that it's not, but quite frankly, Senator Schumer is probably one of the keys. If he doesn't oppose it, and signals that he's not opposing it, those three nominees are probably going to go through pretty quickly. What's going on in the Senate is, is a very slow drip of approvals for nominations for anything in the administration. Just like 1200 positions overall, in the beginning of my administration, that has to go to Senate and through all. And it's just been a very, very slow drip of them, and this isn't, it's higher than priority chains. So we're contacting Schumer and Gillibrand, and asking them to just try and speed up this process, and we've also talked with the panel. The timeframe, you know, it's anybody's guess, we're hoping it's soon, but we don't know, we're doing everything we possibly can. And I had a, I've been in direct contact with Schumer's office as well about it, so they're well aware of our concerns. But they either quorum, and if that would be people friendly to our concerns on the IJC, those three people, and be getting them, I think it's going to really help us a lot. But make no mistake about it, they're releasing a lot of water now, releasing the max, but we've got to start looking around the corner, because next year, we're going to start stealing the higher levels again coming down from the other Great Lakes, as you want to drain it to horror. But I encourage all of you to contact Schumer's office and ask them to push this, I think it's really important, I haven't heard from you all as well.
Thank you.
Legislature Twist? Hi, Congressman, it's Legislature Twist here. Just, I want to know if there's any funds being set up for residents, if there is going to be, if there is any unfortunate flooding again this year, it's a constant thing that Oswego County's been asking for, is some kind of fund to be set up to ensure that, you know, some of our residents can either put a barrier up, or, you know, be able to protect their properties in some way, or, you know, passively put gravel, anything up to protect, you know, their livelihood.
That's, you're saying, that's the fundamental problem of Plan 2014? They acknowledge that this is going to cause damage to Southern Shoreline. And under treaties like such as these, you're supposed to, if they acknowledge that there's going to be damages, you're supposed to provide funding for those damages. But that's where the Plan 2014 is really fatally flawed, it does not. So we're leading a letter to our appropriations committee, and this is appropriation season right now, we're leading a letter and asking to plus up funding and provide funding for the Southern Shoreline. So hopefully, we'll find out about that in the near future, but we're definitely making a push for that. There's also FEMA money, that's always a possibility out there, but as you know, that's very difficult to get some talk about. Those are two big spots I can see, but getting those people in IJC and getting them to tell them to get their act together, probably the biggest thing we can do for it right now, but the appropriations for that, I was asked.
Legislature Castillo?
Yes, John, Frank Castillo, minority, they...
Sure, Frank, go on.
How you doing? We've met several times, we've talked a little bit.
Yes.
What is your stance on the budget so far, from what we're hearing, and what we're seeing about cuts and what's going to be added? What is your stand right now, and how do you feel about the budget proposal?
I characterize the President's budget as dead on arrival, quite frankly. The President's budgets have become more of a political tool than a budgetary reality, and it really has become a product of modern times, where they send a bunch of stuff up. It's a wish list, and it's not going to happen. The Democrats are in control of the House, the House controls purse trains, and you're not going to see those drastic cuts, it's just not going to happen. What's more likely going to happen is that we're going to have flooding levels out on the hill we have right now, on both sides, on both discretionary, non-discretionary sides. So I'm recently confident that the flooding levels are not going to be significantly affected.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Congressman.
I'm sorry to be on personal schedule, but I'll try to get there again in the near future. If you find yourself a break, and you don't, I understand too, but thank you all very much, and I just had lunch with the Irish Prime Minister, the Vice President, the President, and the Speaker Pelosi, and it was nice to represent Central New York at a small gathering, so happy to stay, I understand all of you, and have a great weekend. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All regular legislative meeting order. Walcott?
Margaret Casser.
Here.
Loper Potter.
Yep.
Edward Gilson.
Here.
David Holtz.
Here.
Roy Rehild, have some excuse. John Martino.
Here.
Bradley Trudell.
Here.
Paul House.
Here.
James Wetherup.
Here.
Mary Ellen Chesbro.
Here.
Linda Lockwood.
Here.
Richard Klein.
Present.
Patrick Twist.
Here.
Stephen Walco.
Here.
Nathan Emmons.
Here.
Thomas Drum.
Here.
Shane Rodwell.
Here.
Heather Delcante.
Here.
Reshaun.
Here.
Tim Stalz, have some excuse. Terry Wilbur.
Here.
James Karasik.
Here.
Morris Sorbello.
Here.
Dan Pfeiffer.
Here.
Frank Castillo.
Wouldn't miss it. Thank you. Would the clerk lead us in the indication?
Let us be thankful for this opportunity to serve our community. Help us to be kind to one another as we confront difficult decisions. Make strong in our hearts that which unites us, build bridges across all that divides us, grant us clarity, courage, and resolve, and above all, we ask for guidance in all that we do. Amen.
At this time, we're going to welcome our local U.S. Coast Guard station in Oswego, Representative Seaman Jacob Hubbard, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please come forward.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Looking for approval of the minutes from the January 3rd and the February 14th legislative meeting. Hold it. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Morris Sorbello, or Legislature Sorbello. Any discussion? Legislature Castillo?
Yes, minutes from the January 3rd meeting. Kind of hashed around what I asked for the last time, and it kind of got thrown out, but I assumed everybody's happy with the way the minutes read as they are. And if that be so, I would ask Legislature Delcante to instruct us on reading comprehension.
I think there was just one mistake, that's all, in the name of the Vice Chairman that was up for election was actually Schatt, not Drum. It was Lockwood versus Schatt, not Drum. For Chairman, it was Wilbur versus Drum, secondly, it was Schatt, and secondment, Vice Chairman.
I understand, she's saying that Drum got votes twice, so maybe he won something.
All right, so we have a motion, is that in the form of a motion, then, to amend?
Motion to amend, and then it says, as such, and vote to approve them as correctly.
Do we have a second?
I know.
Any discussion on that? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Now, back to the original motion. We had a motion made in the second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Close? Carry. At this point, introduction of visitors. Legislature Fattah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of myself, Legislature Trudell, and Chesbro, we are joined in the back to...
Sorry, I have to, we didn't do February 14th minutes.
Right.
Before we do that, I'm sorry.
Excuse me for a second. Yet you are correct, I read them both off, thought we were doing both the same thing.
Oh, you did? I didn't hear you say both of them. Thought you only said one or two. Did you say both?
And I read that. It's not good to take... No, let's, we'll just make it right. Minutes for the February 14th meeting. Do I have a motion approved? Sorbello, seconded by Legislature Karasik. Any discussion?
You know I had corrections.
Legislature Castillo?
The minutes are supposed to reflect actions taken on the floor. There were actions taken on the floor that were not reported in the minutes. The action of the tabling of the January meeting were there, but not the action that was taken before then, because I made a motion on the floor, it was seconded, it was voted upon, and that action is in the minutes. I'm not talking about discussion, I was talking about the action. It should, it should reflect that there was a motion on the floor to correct the minutes. That motion was voted upon, and that's, all I'm asking is those corrections be put in there, that that action that was on the floor be in the minutes, and I'll approve them as correctly.
Quick answer, need one?
I mean, the only thing I would say is that any motion that, if it fails, it does not necessarily need to be included in the minutes, but this is ultimately at the body's discretion on what goes into the minutes.
I would ask the county attorney if that is such, or if it's an action that should be reported, because it's on, it's in the book of rules that any action taken on the floor be reported as minutes. Is it, or is it not?
Actions taken by, the clerk is right that the board controls its own minutes proceedings. Actions taken are by a hundred vote of this body, so they need to be recorded. Motions that are defeated need not be recorded, but may be recorded, because they didn't happen, if they failed us a vote.
They didn't happen.
It's not an actual action of the board if it fails, is what I'm saying. So if they can be included, I believe you're making a motion to correct the minutes of the 14th?
To show the action of the vote, yes.
That would require a second and a vote to amend or correct, and then they can consider it that way.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion made, seconded to amend the minutes of February 14th. Any discussion? Legislature Trudell?
This is plenty to talk, but before we vote it down, I just want to put it out there, I do think the public deserves to know what goes on here, we've already, I realize we have video, but, you know, this is enduring record, it's going to, you know, trans, will beyond all, you know, changes in electronics and everything else, so I don't see anything wrong with making sure that we put details down, so if a motion's made, I believe it should actually be in the minutes, regardless of the outcome.
Okay, any other discussion? This is on the amending the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Okay, back to the original minutes, then, for February 14th. A motion approved by Legislature Klein, seconded by Legislature Twist. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Noted. Thank you. Now, Legislature Fattah.
Okay, thank you. Stand up, guys. All right, on behalf of myself, Legislature Trudell, and Chesbro, we are joined by a couple of wrestlers who played for the recent New York State Tournament a few weeks back, and they are Dean Chamblout, who is from Mexico, he was third in the state tournament this year, and 2018 Section III champ, and a two-time New York State place winner. And he's here today with his father, Todd Chamblout. Congratulations for all of your success. And the other wrestler that we have here today is, now, this is his coach's handwriting here, Roth de Boss McFarlane, from Phoenix High School, he's a four-time New York State finalist, and 2018 New York State champion, and Eastern State champ. And for those of you who follow the sport, he won the finalist this year, and he really should have been, you know, the champ this year, but we won't get into that, but he's a champion, and all right. And so congratulations on all of your success, and good luck in college next year. And before I forget, he is escorted here today by his coach, Gene Mills, who was a 1980 United States Olympic finalist, on the team that year before the boycott, and he was a standout for SU back in the day. So thank you for joining us today, and joining us tonight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. This time, I'd like, there will be a proclamation for Agriculture Literacy Week. The EDP Committee could come forward. Governor Chesbro?
Okay, you're going to show this proclamation, I'm so scared.
Go get her, all that.
There we go. On the count of three, one, two, three. And a second, one, two, three. Thank you. This proclamation is about recognizing Agriculture Literacy Week in Oswego County, and all I can say is, last year, I brought this up for the first time, and it made me, I'm honored to be in a legislature that recognizes the importance of agriculture enough to make it an actual Agriculture Literacy Week, a very important aspect of our county. Whereas, with all its technological marketing and scientific innovations, modern-day agriculture is a mystery to many people. And whereas Oswego County farmers provide a wide variety of products, grocery stores, farm stands, farmer markets, and fifty-year-old farms, and whereas the need for increased agricultural literacy is more crucial than ever for today's citizens and students to understand how food gets from the farm to the table. And whereas, in celebration of Agriculture Literacy Week, observed on March 18th through 22nd, 2019, volunteers throughout the state will read a book with an agricultural theme upon. To second-grade class groupers, students and teachers will also benefit from hands-on lessons. And whereas, now in its 14th year, Agriculture Literacy Week has helped to bring agriculturally-themed books and resources... and resources into thousands of classrooms and libraries throughout New York State. Now, therefore, we, James Wetherup, chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, Terry M. Wilber, Legislature District Twenty-One, and on behalf of the entire legislature to hereby recognize March eighteenth to twenty-second, twenty nineteen, as Agriculture Literacy Week. There we go. Thank you so much. And today is National Ag Day besides that. And I hope some of you, if you have not already volunteered, to read a book to second graders next week. This book is awesome, it really is. And being in that classroom reading this is awesome. I'm reading to six of them next Tuesday. I know, um, legislator Chudal, you're reading, I believe, as well. And legislator Wilber is reading. So, anybody in the public, all I have to do is contact this wonderful lady right here. She'll set you up with a second grade class, and you too can be part of Agriculture Literacy Week. Anything you guys would like to say?
I would just like to say thank you so very, very much. Agriculture is very important. It is to develop an understanding of basic agriculture. Twenty percent of the population is involved somehow with agriculture, which means one out of five students, when they grow up, will somehow be inactive. And they don't want to teach them about food sources and other, uh, agriculture items, so they can make informed decisions regarding other aspects of life. Thank you so very, very much for providing the extension and for the Suica Voyage program, for all the support that you give us. We appreciate it.
We need about forty-five minutes.
Okay, well, thank you, Paul. Okay.
Worked good.
Congratulations, yes. Well done, well done. That's my schedule.
Thank you. This is National Infant Immunization Week. We could have the health committee come forward with, uh, with the director, and legislators Chudal.
I guess the first comment that should be made is that our health department is phenomenal at infant immunizations, and they continue to hit high numbers every year. And we should take a lot of pride in that, because obviously, if you watch the world news, and even narrowing down to more of the local news, there's a lot of children out there that don't start that process early, that don't follow through with it. And I read an article today that a New York judge is, uh, had me ruling that if they don't get their measles shot, they can't come back to school. Uh, it's just a real issue, because, uh, some diseases and afflictions we've pretty much abolished as a nation, and now they're not springing up slowly. Some of them are becoming flashpoints. So, we need to give once, uh, once, uh, one more time to take pride in our health department, uh, the recognition of the importance of these programs. Haven't had a chance to read this, because this is my first day getting back in public. I have a procedure done, so bear with me for a second. Oswego County Legislature proclaiming the week of April twenty-seventh through May fourth, National Infant Immunization Week. Whereas it is important to vaccinate children on time, according to the childhood immunization schedule, to provide the best protection for early life. When babies are vulnerable, and therefore, they are likely to be exposed to disease. And whereas giving babies a recommended immunization by age two is the best way to protect them from fourteen serious childhood diseases. And whereas currently, the United States has the safest, most effective vaccine supply in its history. And whereas since nineteen ninety-four, National Infant Immunization Week has encouraged parents, caregivers, and health, healthcare professionals to participate in education, recognition, and media events to increase the awareness of the importance of immunizing children before their second birthday. Whereas to encourage Oswego County parents to make vaccinating their children a priority, and to talk to family and friends about protecting their children with vaccines. And to encourage businesses, government agencies, community-based organizations, and service groups to spread the immunization message throughout the community. Now, therefore, I, James Wetherup, chairman of the Oswego County Legislature, on behalf of the entire legislature, and the citizens of Oswego County, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-seventh through May fourth, twenty nineteen, as National Infant Immunization Week. You want to talk? You want to talk?
I'll kind of talk. So, um, this year marks the twenty-fifth anniversary of National Infant Immunization Week, um, and also marks the twenty-fifth anniversary for Vaccines for Children, which is a federally funded program to make sure that children that are on or under insurance get, um, appropriate vaccinations at no cost to them. And I just wanted to share our rate. So, last year, um, New York State Immunization Rate for children nineteen to thirty-five months old were, was fifty-nine, and Oswego County had sixty-nine. So, we're ten percent above New York State average. Um, and our numbers keep, um, increasing. We do a lot of public outreach, we go into schools, and our staff really works hard to make sure that the community is a healthier place to live.
Um, so two of our staff members, Anna Macamara and Tina Fergoys, would be here representing the health department and receiving the proclamation. But me and Yody were given the opportunity to come in. They currently are at the annual statewide Adult Immunization Coalition Meeting in Saratoga right now. Yesterday, we received news that we received an award, a pretty awesome award, for our collaboration and innovation with working with coalition members to implement a campus-wide HPV clinic for that vaccine. Um, it was given to us by the director of the New York State Department of Health. So, we're very proud.
And there was, um, only seven other counties that received this, um, award, and we were around seven, so, out of around thirty or something. We just gotta get some candy.
They do such a good job, the K T doesn't have anything to say.
Yeah, because they did most of the job. I just sit back.
Uh, public speakers, resolutions of the day. Your honor, thank you. Reports of county officials. Key reports of, uh, standing committees. Thank you. Reports of special committees. Okay, we'll jump right into resolutions. Resolution G C one by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I oppose this resolution, urges adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizes reclassification of one physician in the county clerk's office.
Just upgrading a physician, so we can perform a wider range of duties. And we will also have additional savings of seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Thank you. Any discussion? Legislator Castillo.
I was just wondering, now, I, I know the reason why we're doing the upgrade. Are we going to, sometime in the future, going to ask for another driver? Or just going to do the same function?
Same function, and do some other duties.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Resolution G C two by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I oppose this resolution, urges adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution appointing member to the county board of ethics.
Yes, we're, um, Honorable Attorney J. Madison, uh, will be, uh, reappointed, so I'll return to two, two-one, twenty-two.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry it. Resolution G C three by legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I oppose this resolution, urges adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizes execution and delivery of deeds for titles which were required by foreclosure for tax years twenty eighteen or prior.
I believe mostly self-explanatory, but goes back to, uh, also better, please, so.
Yes, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry it. Resolution G C four, legislator Holt.
Mr. Chairman, I oppose this resolution, urges adoption.
Will the clerk please read the headings?
Resolution urging New York State fund purchase of electronic poll books for county boards of elections.
Yes, this will have to be amended.
I think you all have the amendments in front of you. You made a motion to amend then?
I didn't see the amendment.
A motion by legislator, uh, seconded, seconded by legislator Klein for the amendment. We all understand the amendment?
Did we do the amendment?
We have not seen amendments.
That's not unusual, but.
Um, if the administrator would read the change, very small, but it's, you think, necessary?
The reason for the change is that the Senate and Assembly yesterday adopted budget proposals of their own that restore and provide funding for, uh, the election reforms and electronic books, poll books. So, we thought it appropriate, simply to add a resolve acknowledging that they recognize that's a burden on counties. The amendment is a, uh, it would become the first resolved, uh, and it reads, "Resolved that the Oswego County Legislature commends the state senate and assembly for including funding for the electronic, for the election reforms and electronic poll books in their one-house budget proposals."
Any other discussion?
We're going to vote on the amendment first.
We're going to vote on the amendment first. Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, amendment carried. Back to the original amendment. As, amended. Okay. Any other discussion on that? Legislator Castillo.
If the funding is there, why are we putting this resolution out?
Uh, the funding, the funding isn't there. It is not in the governor's proposal. Senate and the Senate have responded, but with their own proposals, funding these. So, it's not a, it's not a settled question yet. The next step is the, uh, develop a, uh, two conference committee between Senate and Assembly to go through the state budget, and then they negotiate with the governor. So, we want to encourage them to keep these in the final state budget. So, right now, the Senate and Assembly's version of the budget is different from the governor's. Senate and Assembly has the funding there, the governor does not.
Second part, where does the million dollars come into this picture? Says, uh, whereas implementing these reforms will require counties to purchase and use electronic polling books estimated costs up to a million dollars per county.
That was the research that NICE Act did. Uh, the estimate that I heard from our election commissioners for this county is, uh, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand.
For what?
For, to pay for the election reforms and the, uh, poll books.
Why are we getting poll books?
It's required in the new legislations.
No, it's not.
Is there any, is there any other discussion?
I'm sorry, no, wait a second. That, there's a bill on the floor that says that they recommend that they may use electronic books. It does not mandate that we use electronic polling books. So, why are we going to buy electronic polling books and putting the cost on the state or on us when they're not required? It's not mandated. That's why I'm asking the questions. I mean, I asked, I, I made three phone calls on this, and I found out that it's not mandated. The cost of, uh, a, uh, the primaries is the savings that, that's why the governor pulled the cost for the, uh, that he was going to reimburse us on the early voting. Because the twenty-five million dollars is being saved to the state by him only one poll, uh, only one, uh, primary. And yet, we're, we're talking about sending a letter that says that we want to get funded for this, and we're already funded for it. I'm sorry, I can't be a favor of this, and this is, uh, this is crying fire just because somebody saw somebody with a book of matches. They're not mandated, none of this stuff is mandated.
Any other discussion? All those? Legislator Holt.
Our election commission said it is going to be, it said it is mandated.
That's what, that's my understanding from the election commission, uh, attending the state cap. Legislator Klein, just, just to follow up. I asked in committee, our commissioner, Brazek, and also our deputy from the Republican side, and they both said it was going to be a call that we needed. That's what they said.
And I guess I would also say that it's up to, we're not, doesn't mean that we're spending it if we don't have to. Legislator Wilber.
Um, I believe that the discrepancy is, they are not mandated right now, but they are in the process of being mandated. So, we are trying to get out in front of the issue before we end up with another unfunded mandate that's on the backs of the taxpayers of Oswego County.
Thank you. Can you wrap up? Legislator Castillo.
I'll try to, I, I'm sorry, this commission, but we're talking about money. It's, there's a bill on the floor right now, it's been through the senate. It's Senator Myries, uh, he's a Democrat out of the twenty-fifth district. It's bill S five oh eight A, and it is the one that states that counties may use electronic polling books. And when I spoke with the state court of elections, and I talked with his office, they both said that they are not going to make a mandate, because they know that it would be too much to take on for all the counties to have to mandate electronic polling books. So, I'm sorry, you know, it's the ineptness of our, uh, our Board of Elections Commissioners not to be here to answer the questions on this, and state the facts where they say that it's mandated. They, they told you guys in committee that it's mandated, it's not mandated. And then legislator Wilber says it's possibly mandated down the road. Well, I'm sorry, just, you know, just because you've got a gun doesn't mean you're going to shoot somebody.
Mr. Chairman, I have to respond here to, for a legislator to sit on this floor and say that another department head or something is inept and didn't give the right information. Maybe we need to understand what all the information was before we open our mouth on this floor and say that they're a liar. So, I would ask that legislator Castillo, please take that remark off the floor, because that is not appropriate.
How long you want? But I got the information. The horse is my, because when I called the state board of elections, they said, check with your board of elections. I said, well, if I trusted them, I wouldn't be calling you.
Separation, Frank. Any other discussion?
Gentlemen, let's call this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Want to oppose?
Want to oppose? Thank you. Resolution P S one by legislator Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I oppose the following resolution, urges adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizes budget modification, emergency management office, emergency services, hazardous materials, emergency planning, grant, this for year twenty eighteen.
Uh, this is accepting grant amount of five thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars for the, uh, Department of Emergency Analysis.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Carry it. Thank you. Resolution P S two by legislator Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I oppose the following resolution, urges adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizes reclassification of... Resolution authorizing reclassification of position in the district attorney department.
Uh, what this is doing is just what we see in the title here. We're actually making a clerk part-time to a taxpayer's part-time. This will, uh, conform to the duties which that individual has performed.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Thank you. Uh, resolution 18-1 by legislator Walpole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer the following resolution, and it's adopted.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the implementation and funding of the cost of one hundred percent of the cost of a transportation project, which may be eligible for federal aid and/or state aid or reimbursement from Bridge New York Funds.
Is that written? We go through this manual.
Yes, thank you. Any discussion?
I have a question for the attorney. Uh, just on the wording from all for the infrastructure, um, it says the state aid for which may be eligible for federal aid, may. I mean, does that leave wiggle room, Rich? I mean, I just want to make.
I understand that this was based on the resolution that state recommended, model resolution. They recommended we adopt and similar to other resolutions. State aid and reimbursement for Marchiselli is also conditioned on certain benchmarks that, you know, the bridge meet certain criteria, the, it's done to their satisfaction, that we, we complied with, the project as proposed, uh, that type of thing. So the, I defer to the superintendent, but I don't think, you know, we're good at getting Marchiselli aid, which is federal and state highway aid. But we can lose it if we don't do certain things, don't submit it timely, for example. So I would defer to Kurt on that. I understand that's based in the model resolution.
I think we follow the guidelines as we have in the past and we follow everything as we previously have. That's why they, they, they being the state has written it like this. That's why I just, I strongly feel that we keep it as.
Any other discussion? legislator Castillo.
I had discussions with, uh, Mr. Aspel before the meeting and I asked if he had any reservations with the amending the resolution to say shall be eligible instead of may. And he felt that he didn't have any problems with that, didn't have either state. I would rather see shall be in there instead of maybe, okay? I do know that this has already been okay for 2018 and, uh, we're just waiting for the project to start.
legislator, please.
I feel like, uh, if we are changing what New York State wants us to do, we might be setting ourselves up to where we don't get a refund. It says shall or may or whatever it says because we have to follow strict guidelines. And if we alter the guidelines that we were given, we might be setting ourselves up for, uh, having to pay a million dollar, uh, bill. So I think that we should keep it the way it is in order to ensure that we get ninety-five, ninety-five percent reimbursement for a, for a bridge that definitely needs to be fixed and repaired.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, resolution EP1 by legislator Chetwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modifications, tourism promotion and advertising.
Due to support of Senator, uh, Eddie Ritchie, Oswego County has received sixty-five thousand dollars from three separate grants. Our budget presently shows forty thousand, but now that we have completed all necessary criteria, we're able to put the other twenty-five thousand into the, uh, budget.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution EP2 by legislator Chetwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budget modifications for capital project number 192, Route 176, Howard Road, Volney Sewer District Project.
Two years ago, in order to get the full cost of the project ahead, we showed in good faith, so we took upon ourselves, but in doing that was able to procure funding and doing it that way. Last year, we received one point four nine million dollars in grants from federal, state and local sources. And this resolution is to increase the authorization to reflect those funds so we can get reimbursement for certain construction costs.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution EP3 by legislator Chetwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution to amend the agricultural district plan boundaries by permitting additional areas of inclusion pursuant to agriculture and markets law, section 303B, as amended.
Each year from January one to January thirty-first, we allow debts, any tax parcels, landowners of Oswego County to put forth their property to be in an ag district. Then it has to go in front of the Oswego County Farmland and Protection Board to be approved. This year, we have four new qualified parcels totaling two hundred and sixteen point two-nine acres and we would like to recommend their inclusion in these four parcels to the Oswego County Agricultural District Plan.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution EP4 by legislator Chetwell.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I offer this resolution and I urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution urging the international joint commission to maximize Lake Ontario-St. Lawrence River outflows to prevent potential flooding in 2019.
I think this resolution is very timely, as you can see from, our congressman is already active in, um, in Washington going after some funds. It is a critical thing and we feel that it is imperative that we too send a resolution that shows the importance and the critical nature of this. The spring thaw and the water is already high and the Army Corps of Engineers shows possibility of two more feet of water by June. We definitely need to send this, uh, resolution on and it should be sent on as well to, uh, Donald Trump, President of the United States of America, and to our congressman, senators, and break down to our local people.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution EP5 by legislator Chetwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing application by the county of Oswego, New York State Homes and Community Renewal, New York State Community Development Block Grant Program, or Well and Septic System Repair or Replacement Program, and lateral hookups to public sewer or water infrastructure, and set a public hearing to discuss this application.
Basically what he says, try to get an application, get eight hundred fifty thousand dollars to help our residents, and you get a public hearing set.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Thank you. Uh, resolution AT1 by. I'm sorry, I'm staying. By legislator Carras.
Mr. Chairman and fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Thank you. Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Health Department, 2019, Article Six, State and Senate Award.
This is a, uh, budgetary modification because we got a ten thousand dollar, uh, awarded for participating in the performance initiative, year six, and, uh, then we will disperse it according to the budget lines that need to be put in.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution AT2 by legislator Carras.
Mr. Chairman and fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Health Department, Healthy Families Program Training Expenses.
This is a little bit different, unusual for us as a legislative body, but the Healthy Families Program, which was started in 2017, has been successful. One of the outreach programs with this is small incentives to keep families engaged with us and continue with the program and, uh, end up showing positive result. As a result, Rural Health, uh, Network, I think it was that they, uh, they're, um, gave us, no, wait a minute. This is the training, sorry, I told you I might not do it right. This was training done for Healthy Families Program Training and, uh, it's three hundred and sixty dollars to cover the overtime for the trap. The training was already covered under budget.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution AT3 by legislator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing acceptance of donation from Rural Health Network, Oswego County to the Event, Healthy Families Program.
Yeah, this is the one that's a bit unusual for us because Rural Health Network, uh, has, uh, donated two five hundred dollar Walmart gift cards, uh, which are to be used to buy small incentives for families to stay in the program, motivate them to complete the program. And of course, that helps to increase, increase the, uh, betterment of the county's overall health rankings. But we need to accept even the gift cards.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution AT4 by legislator Carras.
See, there's only four of them, so I messed up one. Uh, Mr. Chairman and fellow legislators, I offer the following resolution for your consideration.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing Oswego County Health Department to raise city life fee.
This is a fee, uh, scheduled that, um, we're raising because it is, uh, has been raised by the city of Oswego, which does the testing for water. And, uh, we're, we're using the fee to cover those costs of that raise and part of this was retro.
Thank you. Any discussion? legislator Castillo.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend this resolution and keep the individual well owners' current fee as is, not, uh, impose an extra ten dollars on the, uh, individual, uh, well owners. Make a motion to amend it.
Okay.
Take that fee out of there.
Do we have a second?
I'll second for a second.
All right, seconded by legislator, jump for discussion. legislator Carras.
You know, this is one of those things that I hate to see any fees get raised on anybody in the county. But it's, it's really not a vast majority of people per year that do this. And I'm not sure it's entirely fair to, uh, tell everybody else in the county, we need to share this cost. I realize that, you know, if there was massive numbers that did this, we, we probably should look within budget to try to get this done. But for what this is, um, I think the sampling fee hasn't been raised in years. I mean, it, this is nothing that we keep popping up. This is the first time I've seen this since I've been a legislator that we're raising testing fees on water. So it, it's time to update it because the city updated it on us. And it is a fairly narrow scope. Uh, the public water supplies is probably the bigger fee increase, uh, but they have to get the water testing anyway.
Thank you. legislator Castillo.
That's, uh, heard ninety-nine water samples taken from individuals last year. I don't, I think the state, I mean, I think the county can absorb a two thousand dollar increase to service these people. We're asking, you know, the, the water testing is going to go down because there's going to be more and more water districts around. And I'm just asking for the individual not to have to do this because a lot of these people, they won't have their wells tested. Why? Because the fee went up, yeah, it's, it's only thirty dollars, it's only twenty dollars. That's a lot of money to some of these people up in the North Country. I would like a roll call, hold on, this amendment, please.
legislator Bravo.
I think it's, this is a fee that's being pushed, you know, up from the city of Oswego to, to the county health department for a need we have. It's for very specific individuals, there's a, there's a hundred individuals, uh, then it gets into businesses, less than three hundred, you know, restaurants included. This is another one of those things, I'm not sure I want to say, let's have all of the taxpayers make up the difference for, uh, some specific uses that we need to increase the fees just to cover our costs.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, legislator Castillo has called for a roll call on the amendment. Yes.
Margaret Kessler?
No.
Alfred Potter?
No.
Edward Gilson?
No.
David Holes?
No.
Roy Rehild has an excuse. John Martino?
No.
Brad Luttrell?
No.
Paul House?
No.
James Wetherow?
No.
Mary Ellen Chesbro?
No.
Linda Lockwood?
No.
Richard Klein?
No.
Patrick Twist?
No.
Stephen Walpole?
No.
Nathan Emmons?
No.
Thomas Strum?
Yes.
Shane Braunbo?
No.
Heather Delconte?
Yes.
Resha?
Yes.
Tim Salzab has an excuse. Terry Wilber?
No.
James Crossit?
No.
Moore Savel?
No.
Daniel Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Frank Castillo?
Yes.
Thank you. Original, uh, resolution then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution HS1 by legislator Tudaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution to Oswego County Legislature in support of the 2019-2020 budget proposal to invest fifteen million to address unmet needs of the elderly.
Mr. Chairman, as stated, this is in support of the budget, which has the fifteen million to our office for the aging. This was presented and discussed at the Human Services Committee unanimously approved.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution HS2 by legislator Tudaw.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing the chairman of the legislature to enter into an agreement with Oswego County Opportunities Incorporated, Call and Write Program.
The Call and Write Program, while, Mr. Chairman, as I twice understood, population in this resolution was again presented and discussed at the Human Services Committee, where was unanimously carried.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution HS3 by legislator Tudaw.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution reappointing two members and appointing one member to the community services board.
Mr. Chairman, the community service board continues to provide, uh, excellent service and, uh, discussed and provided through the Human Services Committee and unanimously carried.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution HS4 by legislator Tudaw.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing budget modification, Department of Social Services to accept New York State Office of Alcohol and Substance Abuse Day.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the amount is, in, uh, the amount is sixty thousand dollars. So the resolution was again unanimously carried by the Human Services Committee.
Thank you. Any other discussion? legislator Bravo.
Yeah, I will be extending on the board of directors of the bottom.
Noted. Any others? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Resolution HS5 by legislator Tudaw.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing professional services contractual amendment to increase transportation services contract.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the traditional budget madness, saying no increase in local shares, this is funded by the hospital, oh, M.A., pardon me, and state aid, federal Medicaid, was unanimously carried at the Human Services Committee.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Want to post?
Want to oppose?
Resolution HS6 by legislator Tudaw.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution warning professional services contract, RFP-HD-18 dash zero three, school-based mental health clinic services implementation funding project.
Mr. Chairman, this was again presented at the HS Committee, uh, discussed, was unanimously carried, and there'd be no increase in our local share.
Thank you. Any other discussion? legislator Carras.
Even though I'm not connected with the mental health division of the rise and don't benefit from this personally, I'm going to abstain because I am an employee of the rise.
Noted. legislator Shaw.
I just want to be assured that no cost will transfer to us even at the end of the contract if it doesn't work, it goes away.
I understand, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Want to post?
Noted.
Resolution HS7 by legislator Tudaw.
Mr. Chairman, I offer the following resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution warning professional services contract, RFP-DSK-18 dash zero zero three, substance abuse assessment, screening and case management.
Mr. Chairman, while this resolution was not presented at the, uh, committee meeting, the information was presented at the committee and was generally, uh, uh, accepted. Uh, the main highlights are such that there were three vendors. Currently, we have a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars slated for our position for this type of work. The vendor selected will do it for a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars, so resulting in a thirty thousand dollar, uh, thirty thousand dollar savings for the county and an increased level of service.
Thank you. Any other discussions? I'm sorry, I'm.
I don't have a thing for the same reason.
Noted. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Want to post?
Carry it. Resolution FP1 by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution authorizing professional services contract, Human Resources Department, Drug and Alcohol Testing Services.
Self-explanatory. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both. Carry. Resolution FP two by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Will the clerk please read the heading?
Resolution warning professional services contract, RFP TR nineteen dash zero zero one, title search services.
This is nothing more than helping our treasurer and foreclosed properties by our services, making sure things are clear.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Resolution FP three by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and urge its adoption. However, there is an amendment that goes with this, um, basically stated for the same reasons that we were working with on the last amendment. Uh, Administrator Church can elaborate a little bit on. Okay. I'm putting that as form of a motion. Those who amend this.
Wait, we have the amendment?
Yes.
Yes. Clerk, please read the, that's the sixth. My fault, my bad.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
But it's my bad?
Yep.
Resolution opposing the proposed amended twenty-twenty executive state budget impacting aid and incentives to municipalities and state hall shifts to counties.
Alright, now back to the amendment that he's distributing. I think you'll find that it is much the same. Administrator, would you elaborate? Please.
Yeah, in the same, similar to the election's resolution, the Assembly and the Senate and their budget proposals have restored the AIM funding, so it's in the same position as the other one. The Senate and Assembly have restored that aid. The governor's proposed budget does not have it. That's got to be worked out through the negotiations in Albany, so this resolution, we updated to until we resolve same one as the other one, that we commend the Senate and Assembly for restoring the AIM funds.
Thank you. Your motion made and seconded for the amendment. Any discussion?
I just want to make a point. This is twice now that we had two, five copies of the amendments passed out during session. That is unacceptable, regardless of how easy it is.
Legislator Castillo.
Where the amendment ended being put in, I don't understand why again we're sending out flying wolf or fire when there isn't a fire. It's just that we look like, okay, let's just keep sending them. And again, like we said, the majority caucus had all this, the minority caucus got handed it. And I think it's ridiculous. I ended up voting in favor of either one of them anyway.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Both.
Four both.
Thank you. Back to the original amendment then. Any other discussion? Or not amendment, the original resolution as amended?
As amended.
As amended. Any discussion? Legislator Shaw.
Well, I just wanted to go over that. The governor did offer a twenty-million-dollar incentive. I think there's a big train coming tax-wise, and this is my opinion. It's time to dump the layers of government. Towns and village are antiquated models. Do we really need all these buildings? From a business perspective, you would be bankrupt. The South is flourishing. They regionalized long ago and are stingy with their handouts. We are light years beyond the horse and buggy days. That's why towns are ten miles or so apart. A horse could only travel that far. We have a mass exodus from our state, in large part, its taxes and jobs. Property tax far outweighs the value of our nearly valueless property. It's upside down. And the people running towns and villages should not decide, the taxpayers should. I am not looking at these issues as a Democrat, but as a representative of the people who are sick of being taxed to death. Perhaps we could approach the state instead of politicizing each issue with memorializing resolutions, and let the legislature look at the math and have a conversation with the state about alternatives to things such as AIM. I know they rescinded now, but it'll come back. Show the state we can streamline. We were offered huge incentives, but nothing happened. Let's be a leader in tax savings. I feel this is a knee-jerk reaction without doing our homework. We allow Anadaga County to do our purchasing, but we don't take action on sharing services locally. I, it offends me. Blaming our budgetary problems on unfunded mandates is not an excuse to be irresponsible in our governing and spending. In fact, it should serve as an incentive to govern conservatively and put a lid on spending, something we have not done yet. New York has three thousand four-hundred-and-fifty-four local governments. Political patronage plays a role in preserving many of the state's existing structures. There is a relationship that develops between politics and these boards, and that makes coordinating projects, especially regional planning, no easy task. I really think it's time to tackle this issue. The taxpayer cannot take anymore.
Thank you. Thank you. Legislator Castillo.
Ditto.
That's all? Frank, you got more? Alright, any other discussion? Legislator Carr.
Marie makes some good points, and I agree with her on most. Matter of fact, probably all. The thing is, and I've been around government a long time, being at the county level and also the county level, the county or the state doesn't have any authoritarian type of discussion and/or authority over the local municipalities. And that's a problem. And it's a problem because I agree a hundred percent. How our town was set up years ago was how far a horse could go, could have jumped through the streams and rivers and all that bullshit. But the point is, the point is this, when you start talking, and I've talked about this a lot, Jimmy, you know this. I've talked about regionalizing courts. I've talked about sitting there and hamming your tax receivers and getting rid of, having taxes nailed in, like holding to a bank. There's a lot of different things we could do, but trying to get somebody to move off their dead ass to do this is unbelievable because we have no authority over. Everybody wants to have the job for Uncle Joe and Aunt Jenny, and I've got to have this because of the fact that, you know, this is how my, uh, I want that identity. And we also talk about, well, the inconvenience is the people to sit there and have to go to different courses. That wouldn't be right if they had to go to Volney from Scruple. Well, Jesus Christ, you didn't get a goddamn ticket for not sending your mother a birthday card.
Mr. Chairman, we're getting off of, we're getting off of what this resolution is right here. This is great discussion for another time. At the end of the meeting even, I would, I would entertain, we've got to get back to the resolution at hand here.
Legislator Castillo.
Was there a point of order called? I didn't hear it.
Want one now?
Legislative client should be able to continue.
I didn't call it one border on, legislator Shaw, and I did not call it one border on legislative client.
We'll handle this, okay? Legislative client, do you have any more to add?
Nope.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Is it germane? Legislator Castillo.
I'd like to go along with legislative client except for profanity to use that I find unacceptable on the legislative floor.
So it's ditto, but just a couple of words off.
Right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both. Carry. Legislature, eh, legislature. Resolution FP four by legislator Martino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer this resolution and urge its adoption.
Clerk, please read the heading.
Resolution authorizing budgetary modification, Treasury Office.
This is merely moving some old ass money and cover baby.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, sir. Unfinished business. Legislator, you're up.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to, actually, this is more miscellaneous business, so there's no unfinished, uh...
No unfinished business? We'll go to miscellaneous.
Alright. I just want to take this opportunity, I know in certain levels of government, they don't appreciate the press and the newspapers and everybody else, but I would like to recognize an individual here, Steve Jablonsky, uh, who's currently with the Oswego County Today.com.